First up, we have...
This conference will now be recorded.
First, we have the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, and that'll be presented by Stephanie Strutner with ASAP for the mayor.
Particularly while these are being confounded by the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the red ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a DEA agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas businesses and other entities throughout Anderson County will display red ribbons and lights as part of the "I Am One" campaign, symbolizing the role of each of us that we can play to be proactive against substance misuse in our community. And whereas the Allies for Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition and the ASAP Youth Ambassadors have been working to eliminate stigma, increase knowledge, reduce access, and encourage a drug-free lifestyle. And whereas success will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to substance misuse prevention are imperative. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts. Now therefore, we, Anderson County Mayor Terry Frank and the Anderson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 23 through October 31 as Red Ribbon Week in Anderson County, Tennessee, and do wholeheartedly encourage all citizens and sectors to participate in substance misuse prevention activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long. Thank you.
Appreciate all the work that Stephanie and the ASAP group does for our county. Next is a resolution in support of the Oak Ridge Motorsports Complex. I'm sorry, was someone wanting to speak?
Good evening, this is Stephanie, and we have Matthew Polichio, which is one of our youth ambassadors, online tonight to accept the proclamation. Matthew, is there anything you'd like to say on behalf of the youth ambassadors?
Thank you. My name is Matthew Polichio. I go to Clinton High School, and I'm a youth ambassador. I would like to thank you for proclamation. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matthew. And commissioners, I have a few things that I want to share with you tonight. One is, we have a few representatives from ASAP online here with us this evening. But also, today, we launched our data dashboard, which is an interactive feature that follows many of the indicators that we've tracked over the last 12 years. And so you can find that on our website, and you'll be hearing more about that. But also, there's a DEA takeback for prescription medications on October 24. And this is especially timely considering where we are with the pandemic and the isolation and the increased stress that this causes for a lot of people. And so we'd like to encourage everyone and would appreciate your support in helping us to spread the word that we have permanent medication disposal bins at every police department in our county, and encourage people to take this opportunity to clean out the medication that they no longer use and take it to properly dispose. And it is my distinct pleasure to announce to you that ASAP of Anderson has been the recipient of our largest federal grant to date. We have recently been awarded the Strategic Prevention Framework Partnership for Success Grant. It's a $1.25 million grant that will last over the course of the next five years. They'll allow us to collaborate with Scott County and Roan County to enhance our prevention efforts across the county lines. You and I both know that prevention is important, and that substance use doesn't stop at the county line. And so this will allow us to enhance what we've already been doing. This award was pretty competitive. We were one of 86 awards funded out of over 500 applicants. So we're certainly proud of that. And ASAP was recently selected to be the national case study presented to United States Congress this year for having the most successful outcomes for any current drug-free communities award grantee. And so just like to thank you all for all of your support and what you've done to enable this, and truly acknowledge that it takes our entire community to have made this happen. And with that, I want to say, I know I've had the opportunity to tell a couple of you in person, but I will, at the end of November, be stepping down and retiring from my position as Executive Director with ASAP of Anderson to spend a little bit more time with my family and do some national consulting. But the mission remains very important. And just as the resolution presented by Mayor Frank stated, we each play a role. And so I'm just one person. The real effort has been on behalf of this community and this body. And so I thank you for that and encourage you to continue to stay connected with the coalition and encourage the community to continue to support ASAP and its mission. And again, thank you, Mayor Frank, for reading this proclamation, and thank you, Commission, for this opportunity.
We certainly appreciate the effort you've made over the years with the work there with ASAP. Sorry to see you go, but we wish you luck. Next up is a resolution in support of the Oak Ridge Motorsports Complex, and that will be presented by Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Anderson County, Tennessee Board of Commissioners, Resolution 2010-821... Oh, excuse me, 828. Resolution supporting the OMP, or the Oak Ridge Motor Park Partnership Plans for a motorsports park to be located in the Horizon Center. Whereas the Oak Ridge Motorsports Park, or OMP Partnership, plans to develop a motorsports park in Horizon Center in Oak Ridge. And whereas the Oak Ridge Industrial Development Board voted to sell land to OMP Partnership for the purpose of developing the motorsports park, and the Oak Ridge City Council endorsed the project. And whereas the principals of the OMP Partnership have demonstrated commitment to Oak Ridge and to Anderson County. And whereas the property identified for the motorsports park has been vacant for 25 years, and order to be attractive for industrial use requires significant and expensive infrastructure and improvements. And whereas the motorsports park will be a multifaceted facility able to provide a number of resources and services to the citizens of Anderson County and visitors. And whereas the motorsports park will be marketed as a tourist destination and has the potential to attract national and international visitors to Oak Ridge, therefore having a positive economic impact in Oak Ridge and the surrounding area. Now therefore be it resolved that the Anderson County Board of Commissioners support the OMP Partnership Plan for the motorsports park to be located in Horizon Center in Oak Ridge. Be it further resolved that we urge all parties involved to complete their due diligence, and all governmental bodies to approve requests related to land transfers and rezoning in a timely manner to ensure the success of this project. Approved and adopted this 19th day of October 2020. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Anyone wish to speak on that resolution for the Oak Ridge Motorsports Complex? Hearing none. Moving on to the next proclamation. It'll be honoring Tom Behan, and that will be presented by Commissioner Jaeger from the Oak Ridge Districts.
I can't see you, Tom. I know you're there, but I don't see any... Wish you were here with me. I met Tom Behan about a month and a half after I moved to Oak Ridge. And he and his wife, Kay Brookshire, have been great friends ever since. And it's a real privilege for me to read this. And unfortunately, it's probably the longest proclamation I've ever seen, so it may take me a few minutes. But here you go, Tom. Whereas Tom Behan, concerned for improved housing and building strong neighborhoods, led him into public service first in Covington, Kentucky, where he was active in community organization that worked to build such communities, and later served as mayor and the city commissioner. And whereas Tom's interest in housing issues continued when he and his family moved to Oak Ridge, Tennessee in 1987, and he became involved in the nonprofit Housing Development Corporation of the Clinch Valley, and later served as Oak Ridge City Councilmember and mayor. And whereas, a native of Nashville, Tennessee, Tom was a 1961 graduate of Father Ryan High School, where he played basketball. And here's a little-known fact that's not in this, but his dad, Tricky Behan, is in the... I don't know if it's full high school Hall of Fame, but he's in the Hall of Fame, Tricky Behan. He also earned a bachelor's degree in philosophy from St. Pius the 10th Seminary in Erlanger, Kentucky. Additionally, he attended St. Mary's Seminary in Baltimore and Xavier University in Cincinnati, where he was a graduate student and student of theology, guidance, and counseling. And whereas Tom began his career in Covington, Kentucky, working in nonprofit activities and teaching. He joined State Farm in 1982, and elected to move to Oak Ridge, Tennessee in 1987. He retired from State Farm in 2007 and is currently an affiliate broker with Betsy Coleman Realty. Tom is a graduate of the Leadership Oak Ridge Program, and he remains an active supporter of many local organizations, including serving as a current board member of the Oak Ridge Housing Authority and current chairman of the Housing Authority Development Corporation. Current board member and past chairman of Oak Ridge Children's Museum Board of Directors, past board member of... Aid to Families of Appalachian Counties, past vice chairman of the Rotary Club of Oak Ridge, past chairman of the Oak Ridge Chamber of Commerce, past board member of the United Way of Anderson County, for which he and his wife, Kay Brookshire, served as 2007 campaign co-chairs. Former member of the Oak Ridge Municipal Planning Commission and past board member... Or past board chairman of the Housing Development Corporation of the Clinch Valley. Whereas Tom Behan and his wife Kay Brookshire are the parents of three children and the proud grandparents to six grandchildren. And whereas in his spare time, Tom enjoys playing banjo and singing with the local band, The Missing Goats and Ridge City Ramblers, sharing his love for music at numerous fundraisers and community events. Now therefore, we, Anderson County Mayor Terry Frank and members of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, in conjunction with the Aid to Distressed Families of Appalachian Counties, or ADFAQ, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 14, 2020, as Tom Behan Day in the Anderson County and join ADFAQ in honoring Tom as the 2020 recipient of the prestigious Bill Wilcox Bow Tie Award for his dedication and continued service in the community. In witness, we have cause the seal of Anderson County, 19th day of October 2020. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you, Phil. I just want to say a couple of words. First of all, this is an event, and then the bow tie really recognizes Bill Wilcox and what he did. But it's also, and I'm humbled by this, but really Kay and I are very grateful for what ADFAQ does, and that's why we really are taking this on. I think during this past six months, ADFAQ has stepped up tremendously, offering services to people that were needed food, they needed rent, the utilities. And so if we can be used to spread that word, that's really what I want to see happen. And I think many of you on the commission have seen some of the work that they have done. But I do appreciate the long, the very long resolution. But again, I just want to say thank you to the commission for doing this and for ADFAQ for what they bring to the community. Just another good... One of the many fine nonprofit organizations that just do good every day. So thank you very much to Phil. He is a board member of ADFAQ and to the county commission and the mayor for what you... For your service to our communities.
And we appreciate all the work that you've done down through the years for Oak Ridge and for the county as a whole. We appreciate that. Anyone else wanting to speak on that proclamation?
I just wanted to add my congratulations to Tom and to Kay because I know how much they've done for the community over the years, and they're very good friends and been a tremendous plus for Oak Ridge. Thank you both for all you've done, and I know you'll continue to do. Thank you.
I'd like to, would like to say thank you to both of them for all that they do.
And this is Jerry Creasy. I want to applaud them both. And Anderson County is very blessed to have Kay and Tom as members of this community. Thank you, Tom, Kay.
Anyone else? If not, moving on to the next proclamation, honoring Claude Martin, and that will be presented by Mayor Terry Frank.
He thought he was here to help lobby you all. But we're here to honor Claude. And one of the wonderful things about our monthly commission meetings is the chance to honor really special people in our community who have gone above and beyond. And Claude is one of those individuals who doesn't do it for glory or attention or accolades. He's just always out there working, working, and working. And so tonight, we're going to shower him with some love here from me and county commission. So here we go, Claude. Whereas Claude Martin is a lifelong resident of Anderson County. And whereas Claude Martin enlisted in the United States Army Air Corps when he was just 15 years old. And whereas during his time of military service, Claude served under General Douglas MacArthur during World War II in the Pacific Theater in the Philippines, Okinawa, Guam, Hawaii, and the post-war invasion of Japan. Claude also served in the Korean War. And whereas Claude is proud to have served his country and years after his service, Claude was instrumental in creating a permanent veterans memorial at the courthouse in Anderson County. Claude personally compiled records of all Anderson County soldiers who were either killed while serving or missing in action. He recruited members of the local and state branches of government to support the veterans memorial project and went door-to-door in the evenings and on weekends to raise funds for constructing the memorial. The Anderson County Courthouse Veterans Memorial was dedicated in 1983. And whereas Claude wasn't the only member of his family to have served in the United States Armed Forces, his two brothers, Howard Martin and Raymond Martin, each received a Purple Heart for service to their country. And whereas after his military service, Claude Martin returned to Anderson County and worked for the Clinton Utilities Board, from which he retired after 38 years. He and his wife Ruth had a family of four sons and one daughter. And whereas Claude remains active in his community, regularly attending community and veterans events, such as the monthly Anderson County Community Veterans Appreciation Breakfast at the Clinton Community Center. He has been a dedicated 64-year member of the Clinton American Legion. Additionally, in 2012, Claude was named a member of the Anderson County Hall of Fame for his military service. Now therefore, we, Anderson County Mayor Terry Frank and members of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize Mr. Claude Martin for his selfless service to the United States of America and his unwavering dedication to his family and the veterans of Anderson County. In grateful thanks, we do proclaim October 30, 2020, as Claude Martin Day in Anderson County to thank Mr. Martin for his commitment to his country and his community. Want to make a speech and introduce your sons, Claude?
Well, I'd be glad to. This is here, John, one of my sons. Leon, he's a good person, a friend of mine, everybody knows him. Then there's Randy, and there's two more back there, my grandson, Chance. He was the manager at the drug store. And he's a teacher at Anderson High School. Pleased to meet you all, and thank you. Boy, I didn't... I thought I'd come down here and sign something.
We can sign you up.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. You know, I'll have to tell... I had a stroke last Saturday a week ago, so this old look. When I was 15 years old, back in them days, we didn't have no money. You know how it was back in them days. So I decided to do something. My dad was sick, my mom was sick. So I decided... They didn't know what I was going to do. So I found the Knoxville to join the Air Force. I was 15 years old. Went through over there and took the test, which didn't have to take much back in them days. But anyhow, when I took my tests and everything, the guy said, "Well, you passed. Somebody got to sign your papers." I said, "I'm going to sign my paper." I said, "I'm running away from home. My mother never signed it." He says, "You got to." I weighed 108 pounds. But I lacked a little bit more, having enough. And he said, "You got to have a few more pounds." I said, "I can't." He said, "Well, why?" I said, "I don't have a penny, not one dime." So he said, "Well, you got to have some." He says, "Go out, get you some bananas, eat them, and then come back." I said, "I can't. No way." So I went in, and he said, "Guy gets the paper signed." And I went out on the street, knowing nobody. I walked down... He was a man walking down the street I'd never met. I walked up to him. I said, "Sir, would you sign the papers for me to join the Air Force?" He said, "I sure will, bud." So that's how I went in, 15 years old. And I stayed that term, stayed another term, stayed another term, stayed another term. I got four discharges. And at one time, I was the youngest soldier in the state of Tennessee. And I ain't going to take no more of you gentlemen and ladies' time. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it, Texas.
Next on the agenda will be a presentation from the Tennessee Valley Coalition for the Homeless. We have someone online with that organization. I believe it was supposed to be Tana, but Tana had a substitution. Julie or Michael? Yep, we may need to reschedule that. That was a response to an item that was on the previous Operations Committee agenda. They were gracious enough to try to come and speak with us a little bit tonight, give us a little bit more information on the homeless situation in the north end of the county. But maybe we can reschedule that. Okay. If nothing else has come before this portion of the meeting, we will adjourn until 6:30. Commissioner Maed? Commissioner Mead, you there?
Yes, TB here. I know it's having, I'm the only one that's, that is shown as connected instead of present.
Yep. Will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Thank you.
Did I miss the prayer? Are we waiting for the pledge?
Uh, yeah, we're, uh, Brian's checking on a couple of things and we're about ready to start.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Let's call the October 19th, 2020 meeting of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners to order. First, we'll have a prayer led by Chaplain Owenby of the Anderson County Sheriff's Department. Then we'll have the pledge by Commissioner Mead.
Pray. To God, we humbly come to you today praising you as the Creator and for your grace and mercy for all those who put their trust in you. We thank you for these men and women on the commission who come to serve the people of Anderson County. We ask that you bless all who participate tonight with wisdom and courage. God, we also pray for all those who serve so faithfully in protecting the citizens of Anderson County. And God, help us to remember that all good things come from you, and we thank you for your blessings. We thank you that you hear us when we pray, and we thank you for Jesus, our Savior. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Please join me all in the pledges of the flag. Either face the flag in the room you're in, or I have a flag here on the screen if you can see it. Hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead, and thank you, Mr. Owenby. And I understand from Vice Chairman Val, you'd like to speak for a couple of minutes on what the chaplain's department does.
I write things down, so I won't ramble. Sergeant Waddell and Captain. Uh, thank you all for letting me come and speak. Uh, I'm Chaplain Fred Owenby with Anderson County Sheriff's Department. I'm a resident of Knox County, so I may be get thrown out quickly, I don't know. But thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted you to know what a great team of dedicated men and women that you have that served through the Anderson County Sheriff's Department. It's been my joy to witness their service for the last six years and to serve as chaplain for the last two and a half. I wanted to tell you that your jail deputies and staff and your road deputies and staff are amazing. They make excellent decisions in their duties. I'm so impressed with their dedication and training. Their teamwork is outstanding. They are a team from top to bottom. I qualify that a little bit because I was in the Knox County as a volunteer with Bible Studies four or five years before I came to Anderson County. And it's just, I know Knox County is bigger and maybe that's the big problem. But, uh, our deputies and our people from top to bottom work together so good. And I, I just don't know that everybody knows that. I'm, I'm amazed by it. I'm amazed by the decisions that deputies made, make in handling problems and calls. And I'm like, you couldn't have been trained on all these situations, but they make such good decisions. So I was asked to talk about chaplains. So I'm gonna read some of the highlights of what chaplains do. I'm not sure everybody knows about our chaplain corps. The sheriff's chaplain corps is intended to support the mission of the Anderson County Sheriff's Department in providing a source of strength to the law enforcement officers and their families, other department members, and any other non-department members as requested by department members. We're handling crisis situations, comfort victims and their families when accidents occur and criminal incidents are committed, and provide counseling and other ministerial functions as may be needed. Uh, by the way, sheriff's chaplains are not sworn law enforcement officers and do not have the power to arrest. Thank God. But, um, the chaplaincy is a volunteer interfaith ministry to the members and family of Anderson County Sheriff's Department and to the community in mass and in other non-department members of Anderson County as needed through the department. A chaplain is a member who provides spiritual guidance and counseling to all members of the department, both sworn and civilian, their families and the community as needed to aid the department. The last thing I'm gonna read is, as part of their duties with the chaplaincy, chaplains are expected to respond and react to such duties that may be requested of them by the Anderson County Sheriff's Department. These tasks may include follow-up to the affected persons. Some of the duties include, but not limited to, death notification, suicide threats, attempts and completions, death of children, fatal car crashes, violent crimes against persons, sex crimes, officer seriously injured or has died. Counsel officers and family members with personal problems be available during large-scale events. Regularly visit with personnel at the main offices, courts and detention facility to offer positive encouragement. Visit sick and injured personnel. Attend and participate in funerals of active and retired officers. Assist in memorial services. Be willing to attend training courses to enhance effectiveness. Do regular ride-alongs with patrol. Attend department graduations, award ceremonies, social events, and offer invocations and benedictions. Represent the department before official bodies upon request. Be able to offer spiritual guidance when requested. Those are, not all the things that are listed, but that's in general what we are. We could actually use some more chaplains. And we, I'm just speaking real frank, and that's Lieutenant Owens is in charge of that. Anybody wants to refer somebody to Lieutenant Owens. What happens is, a lot of people say, yeah, I could be a chaplain, I could do that. And then they don't find out about the training. So you need to know that it's, like, my training was 64 hours. It was eight Saturdays in a row all day, not counting training here. But the, uh, it's called the International Conference of Police Chaplains founded in the 1800s in Great Britain that we are certified under. So a lot of people just aren't able to do that. They can't, they can't do eight Saturdays in a row and take a test and all that. So we, we need more chaplains and, uh, y'all have a great, I'm, you know, I'm telling you. I just don't think, I wish the average citizen knew what a great department you have in the, in the detention facility and the, and the road deputies and, and their bosses. That I call them. I interact more with the, those that are, uh, I don't, I know, I don't get to interact much with the chief and the sheriff and some of those, but see the others quite regularly. Any questions for me, I'll be here. And anybody like my contact information, they can have it. Any questions before I sit in? Thank you so much for letting me be.
Thank you. And moving on with the appearance of citizens, if anyone in the audience or on the, over the phone or online would like to speak at this point, just chime in or come up to the podium, give us your name and address and just make your remarks to the commission, and you'll have three minutes.
Uh, yes, um, my name is, uh, Tom Fowler, and I am a resident here in Anderson County of Oak Ridge. And what I'm gonna take this couple of minutes to talk about is taking a timeout and to get clear and to get certain in an uncertain time of the struggle of addiction in our community. Uh, I've been called by Connie over here at, uh, Community Action, okay? And, um, and the reason why I'm here is, is that I'm pro-intervention task force, okay? Um, and, and what that means to me is, is that, that we as a community gotta give meaning in the fight against addiction. And that's what the center of the community and people in the community that take a timeout uh, and, and to help those that struggle to be able to get help, uh, and additional resources and coming together, uh, with, uh, with connection. You know, they say that if your heart is not pumping, you're not living. Well, my heart is pumping now. And, uh, and so any way that I can be of service, I've been in the recovery business for over eight years. Uh, and this is not about a, a business. What the, this business is, is the business of helping the community and being of service. And so if there's any way that, um, that, that I can be of service or anybody that I know that are in the addiction professional field to help the town of Rocky Top, uh, to help Clinton, or to strategize to make more programs, uh, out here, uh, to help people to reverse the hopelessness that they have in their life to have hope, um, then, you know, we are definitely willing to do so. Um, and, uh, and I believe that's a great idea, y'all, you know, to, uh, to have a, a task force to intervene, because what I've learned in crisis intervention is, is that within crisis, there's always an intervention. There's always a solution. And so, you know, I'm uncertain how that's gonna work. I don't know. I don't have all the answers. Uh, however, becoming clear and certain, uh, is, is what, uh, what we are willing to, uh, you know, accomplish with having some statistics, uh, of some, uh, recovery in the community. And it just changed so much over the years on what that means. Uh, and there's so many gray areas, uh, that, uh, that really need to be filled in. Uh, you know, where places where people can go, uh, and, and to get help. So, um, I'm kinda winging it right here. This is a random call, uh, but, uh, you know, I'm here if anybody needs my information. Uh, definitely, uh, willing to help in any type of way. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a question.
Thank you for coming tonight. And myself and Vice Chairman Val are the commissioners from Rocky Top Area District Four. And we had a meeting, operations meeting, we talked about this. This is a county-wide issue. Uh, we're focusing right now mostly on Rocky Top and that area to get started. You have a contact number, because we're gonna take this up again in operations next month. It's gonna be an ongoing thing. You have some contact information that we could give you a call or?
Most certainly. Most certainly, I got, I got a card and, you know, if you, if y'all need any other resources for people that are the best, you know, I work with people that are 28, 30 years in the field too as well, that would be willing to help with, just simply just helping the community, because it's just, it's gotten rough.
That's what we're looking for.
You know, and we're, we're willing to do it, uh, you know, uh, because it's just one of those things that, um, you know, like I said, it's, it's gotten rough and then they need help.
Right.
We're willing to help, so, uh, yes, I do. Do you need a card?
Please.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too just wanted to, um, say thank you to the young man for stepping forward. Uh, sometimes it's not that easy to step up in front of a legislative body. But, um, I wish there were more that would do what he has done. And I just wanted to say thank you. And, um, I'm sure that Commissioner Isbell will be glad to share the information that he was given as far as the contact. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Any other comments from commissioners? Oh, hey, yep, yep, we got him. Um, is there anyone else that would like to, um, speak under appearance of citizens? If not, we'll move on to approval and correction of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we get started, uh, I would like to say, uh, that we have a commissioner tonight who could be anywhere but here, but he decided to spend, uh, uh, his special day with us, uh, 16 commissioners and the citizens of Anderson County. But I think we ought to take a moment and, uh, wish, uh, Commissioner Waddell a very happy birthday to that.
Happy birthday. Waddell, thank you for, thank you for being here and, uh, congratulations on.
Happy birthday.
Your new grandchild.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. How old are you today?
Thank you all. I'm Double Nichols, 5'5". Thank you, Commissioner Fritz, and thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, do we have, um, any, any corrections to the, uh, motion by Commissioner Mead? Is that to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, I finally got my microphone turned on. Yes, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner Fritz.
Correct.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Not, let's go to the board and vote. It's still got me as. I'll vote. Yes, verbally. Okay. Says change your vote. Okay, it's reconnecting now. Okay, motion passes. Uh, next, approval and correction of the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay. Can I speak on this issue, sir?
Uh, yes.
Uh, I sent you an email earlier. I don't know if you've got it, but, um, I've been talking with the mayor and we'd like to ask county commission approval to move forward with Block House Valley Hunt under the same protocol as before. Uh, if you could add that to the agenda under my report, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Commissioner Waddell, is that? The, okay, I think.
Commissioner Creasy.
Yes. Commissioner Creasy?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to add under new business, uh, issue of the virus, uh, didn't see anything on the agenda related to, to coronavirus. And, uh, noticed that the, we got an email from the mayor today saying the governor had extended, uh, remote meetings until January. I'd like to add that under new business, see if there's any discussion from the rest of the commission on, uh, issues that we may be involved in as a county commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, was that Commissioner Mead, was that second for Commissioner Waddell's motion?
That'd be second as amended by Mr. Creasy, I would make that out.
By Mr. Cre, okay. Can we approve both of those at the same time?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay.
Yes.
You needed leading motion, a primary motion on the, uh, second part from Commissioner Creasy on the COVID. That wasn't in Commissioner Waddell's initial motion. So if he'd be so kind to add that, and then you've got a second from Commissioner Mead on that, we can vote, we can vote on both together at that point.
Oh, okay. Are you okay with it, Commissioner Waddell? Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any, any discussion on approving the regular agenda as amended? If not, let's go to the board and vote.
Yeah, this is Mr. Mead.
Yes.
It was my intention that that's also included, the amendment also included the talking about the hunt as Part F in the law director's report. Was that, I'm not sure that was clear.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that's, that's how we got it.
Okay.
Got it in the motion, so, yeah, thank you though. Clarifying. Okay, next, next we've got committee reports. Catherine Ashmary, purchasing agent, are you there, Catherine?
I am. I hope everybody can hear me.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so under contracts approved by the law director, we have two. Somebody for your approval.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group.
Prove as a group.
Seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Okay, and my tablet's rebooting, so I'll vote yes.
My pad hadn't come up as voting. There it is. Thank you.
Yep. Was that all you had, Catherine?
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if, I didn't hear any amendments.
Oh, okay, hang, hang on. Commissioner Mead? Are you muted, Commissioner?
Well, that probably didn't come across very well. My microphone was off again. On Part B of the report that I think she's about to talk about, I just wanted to make sure that that part had been approved by the law director for approval.
Yes, sir. That's why I was going to let you all know that the next contract is under Section B, pending law director approval, but it has since been approved by the law director.
And did you have, was?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the motion? Not, let's go to the board and vote. I'll vote yes again verbally. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under Section C, other business, is there a request to surplus the capital asset, submitting for your approval?
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, approve, seconded by Commissioner Mead.
Yes.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. I'm voting yes again, but, yeah. Rose up. Motion passes unanimously.
I'm sure what feedback is. Okay, under new business, we have a request to transfer a copy here from the county clerk to Christie. Sorry, my dog just.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager to approve, seconded by Commissioner Dennenberg. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board and vote.
Okay, under Section C, other business, is there a request to surplus the capital asset, submitting for your approval?
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, approve, seconded by Commissioner Mead.
Yes.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. I'm voting yes again, but, yeah. Motion passes unanimously.
I'm not sure what feedback is. Okay, under new business, we have a request to transfer a copy here from the county clerk to Christie. Sorry, my dog just.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager to approve, seconded by Commissioner Dennenberg. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board and vote. I'll vote yes again verbally. We're getting some feedback here in the courthouse. If there's anyone dial in, hit mute, they're not speaking, it'll help.
And Josh, I'm not sure if I, if you guys heard me, but that was all that I have on my report.
That's all, okay. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Budget report by Robbie Holbrook, interim finance director. Are you there, Robbie?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here. Moving right into the cash and fund balance report for September. General fund, restricted funds, $1,073,229. Committed funds are at $2,182,498. Assigned funds, $2,019,078. And unassigned fund balance is at $6.6 million. Total fund balance is $11,910,556 with cash at $10,216,945. Any questions on the fund balance report? Okay, I'll move on into sales tax. Was one report out in August, and I will, August for the county was $3,558,695 total. That's up 9% from last August. The county Anderson portion, $411,366, was up 17% from last August. We did receive September's today. Total for the county was $3,244,196 and for Anderson County, $334,489. That is lower than the last two months, but that's 30% higher than last September. So September's not one of our higher months for sales tax collections. So we're still, in my opinion, looking really, really good on sales tax. Any questions on the sales tax? Okay. With the budget amendments, Group Two appropriations by the school department, numbers five through 10, seeking approval as a group or individually?
Motion by Commissioner Yeager to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Dennenberg. Discussion, Commissioner Wondell.
Sorry, Chairman, it took me a minute to find my mute button. Robbie, you're talking about, I just had a question. Item six, is that the ones we're looking at, Group Two?
Yes, sir.
That, what boiler was it that got repaired? It didn't really say a location. I was just curious.
I'm not real sure either. That's the school department. Dr. Barrett might be online and could tell us to answer that question.
Dr. Barrett's saying it's Clinton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all. That was the only question I had.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. I'm voting yes verbally.
All right, thank you. Group Three, your transfers from the school department, 11 and 12, both major line items and both for $10,000. Seeking approval as a group or individually?
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, approve as a group?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey.
Yes.
Commissioner Smallridge. Are you muted, Commissioner Smallridge?
Sorry, I just, I just hit the wrong button here. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I'm, no, I have no question.
No question, okay. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, which group are we voting on? I failed to get the group number.
Group Two, Commissioner Creasy.
That's kind of what I thought, but I was.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Group Three, transfers by the school department. I apologize.
Yeah, that's the items 11 and 12.
Yes, sir.
$10,000 each.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote. I'll vote yes verbally.
All right, thank you. Group Four, appropriations non-school, numbers 13 through 28 and 32 from the highway department, seeking approval as a group or individually. I'd be happy to answer questions on any of them.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve as a group? And seconded by Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board and vote.
All right, thank you. Group Five, transfers non-school, there are two of them, number 29 and 30, from finance and fleet services, seeking approval as a group or individually?
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, approve as a group.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, and the last one I have tonight is from Group Six appropriations that affect the general fund and assigned fund balance. It's a $1,000 budget amendment from the dental clinic. It's actually money that was donated from the United Way last year to the dental clinic and they didn't get to use it, so we're pulling it out of unassigned and they're going to try to spend it this year. They were trying to get a laptop last year, but they couldn't get it ordered in time.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell to approve?
Yes, sir. Sorry. Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to Section A. A motion was made by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Jamison, to approve a 3% cost of living increase for all full-time county employees excluding school employees retroactive to July 1, 2020.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Mead.
Yes, motion to approve.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey.
Yes.
Discussion, Commissioner Isbell.
Back when we were doing the budget, typically this type of thing is usually done during the budget cycle. Back when we did this budget cycle, I come up with a formula about all this increased sales tax that we would have. Of course, it sounded a little crazy back then to a lot of people, but it's come to fruition. You know, it's there. And so I got an email from Rob asking some questions today, and I just want to go over this real quick, the email. And I asked him about what we budgeted last year. And we budgeted last year, you know, $838,000, so there's no increased budget for the sales tax. We're advised by the Controller's Office and every financial advisor in state to budget conservatively. Last year, 1920, we were $664,249 over in sales tax for general fund. Highway was $433,382 over, and schools were $2,82,255 over their projected budget. This year, we're still doing great. General fund is projected to hit 1.5 million if collections stay like they have been. And again, we budgeted $838,000. That would be close to $700,000 increased revenue. Schools are projected to hit close to $11 million this year, which would be another $2 million for them above budget projections. And highway should be around $400,000 over budget projections. Those are some of the major changes. I think our sales tax numbers will continue to rise. Sales tax revenue is distributed like this. Anderson County and highway department split sales tax 63% to 37%. On half of the amount Anderson County collects, if the county collects $400,000, we split $200,000 and the school split the other $200,000. Basically, the NT where the taxes collecting gets half and the school split the other half based on ADA or enrollment. I've attached the breakdown on August collections, which he's already went over that. Then the cost of 3% raise is $559,914 total for the county, $411,513 for general fund. And then I asked about some other things. A 2% bonus would cost around $355,006 for full-time employees. A 1.5 cent increase would cost the county $279,000. And that's what I was thinking to do, you know, a 1.5% increase and then a 2% one-time bonus. And then that lets us see what we're doing next year. But that's just, you know, I'm going to support what the budget committee said, but I was just giving, you know, my side of the story there. Hopefully, you know, we're doing a lot of things for, and we got, you know, I don't know what we can do for the teachers. Those are the frontline people. You know, they're out there during this COVID epidemic, and if there's anything we can do for them, we need to think about those people too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Commissioner Fritz?
Yes, just as Commissioner Isbell said, my concern was, the teachers did have a potential raise on the table when they took off because the state withdrew their money. But also, when we hand out raises to the general fund employees, always in the past, the highway department is not part of the general fund. And unless we do something different and give money to the highway department, the highway department is not included in this. So that needs to be looked at also, you know, how the highway department might be handling.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with both Commissioner Isbell and Commissioner Fritz on two different fronts. Obviously, anybody that knows, I'm not opposed to giving our employees any kind of raise. I've always supported that on commission as well as budget committee. But I really think we're being a little premature. I really think we should focus on this the next budget cycle. If the numbers keep coming like they are, maybe we can give our employees 5%. So I would support that. I just think we could do more. We've always done the one, the two, the bonuses, but I think we really need to look at salaries across the board for larger increases. But as Commissioner Isbell said, our frontline people is our teachers and our schools and our certified employees there. They need to get the money taken away from them. It would really be nice to work with our school board. Hopefully, the state will fund them next year. But I just think this is a little premature. I think if we work in March and our budget committee works together, that we could really make this a nice package for our employees on many fronts. So I would like to see us defer this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Waddell?
Well, as most of yous has heard, I've gave this, this speech a couple of times now. If I could forego my raise, like Commissioner Val has said. If I could forego my raise, like Commissioner Val has said, and vote yes for it, I would. Our frontline workers are the, the workers at the courthouse, the shares department, EMS, and the highway committee. Those workers are the ones who've been working continuously through this pandemic. Lots of their family members are not working, and they're depending on this job to pay their bills. If you supported giving a multimillion dollar business a TIF, then you can support our employees. If we don't have the money to support our employees, we don't need to be giving TIFs. Since I've been on commission, there's been a lot of wasted money, I feel. And I, I just, I don't think it's right to, to not support our employees in a time like this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mead.
Yes, what I want to say, first of all, I want to, I want to thank Commissioner Isbell for bringing up a whole bunch of stuff that I don't have to repeat now. Thanks, thanks for that, Commissioner Isbell. Also, I'd like to point out that, that the, the actual wording in Section A says that this increase would be for all full-time county employees. I believe that that included the highway department. Are they not full-time highway, I mean, full-time county employees? I mean, even if they're, come out of a different fund, that was my understanding. Perhaps someone could correct me on that. I also believe that this does not include commission. I don't believe we're considered full-time employees. And if, if there's a way, if it does include the commission, I would move to change the motion to not include commission. Could somebody tell me if it would include commission? I don't think it needs to.
I can tell you that. It doesn't include commission. Commission is in line with CTS, and when CTS gives raises, commission also receives a raise, as you did this year, when, when you're in the budget season.
Would there be, would there be a way to exclude commission? Or is it just automatically go, commission already just goes with the employees?
Commission's already excluded because you, you receive your raise through CTS. CTS has, there's, every elected official in the county and a few others receive a raise. Well, if CTS gives raises, or the state of Tennessee, and this year they did, so whatever percentage the CTS employees get, commission gets the same percentage.
Okay, so, so the commissioners wouldn't be included on this?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify. So this, this particular vote does not have any effect on the commission?
It does not. And as far as, as far as the highway department goes, they are, they are considered full-time employees, and the road department, I feel like can fund their, their own raises, a 3% raise. I feel like they have enough money in their budget to do that. Mr. Long may disagree, but we can talk about that.
So this would not include the highway department, but they can take action separately, is what I'm being told?
I'm assuming it can, and my understanding, it included every department: highway, general fund, EMS, Channel 95, the librarians, the 115 fund, and solid waste.
Okay, that is good. That's what I hoped it included. I, I, I maintain my motion as originally given to approve this without amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, the, could Robbie tell us what the fund balance is for the highway department? They're under a different fund balance. They're not named the county general fund. And we really don't, unless the road superintendent requests it, we can't give his employees a raise without his approval or his knowledge.
I can tell, his fund balance is 4.2 million right now, $4,279,053.
So if this motion passes, is it coming out of county general fund, unassigned fund balance? Or would his portion come out of his fund balance?
Each department's portion, each fund's portion would come out of their own fund balance. Just like if this motion passes for general fund, if the 3% raise is $411,513, it would come out of 101 budget, or the fund balance, as would library's $9,000. Solid waste is $4,555, EMS $101,78, tourism $3,225, and the highways $29,367, and channel 95 $1505. One thing to keep in mind, I mean, as far as highway goes especially, there, like general fund, they've seen a lot of excess sales tax. I mean, there'll be, you know, $400,000, probably more than we have budgeted for this year.
Okay, but this motion is just county general fund, not highway department. Is that correct?
That's not what he just said.
I think the intent of Budget Committee was to give everyone a raise. Let me find that motion again. In the county, a cost of living raise, that usually includes every employee in the county.
But there have been years that the road department would not give a raise out of their budget. We had to transfer money into the road department's budget from county general fund. And they've got a pretty healthy fund balance, and I'm opposed to taking county general fund reserve money to give to the highway department at this point.
Well, the intent was to never transfer any money to any department for these raises. Most, every department we're talking about, in fact, every department we're talking about has a fund balance that can fund their own 3% if it passes.
But if the road.
I mean, last year also.
If the road superintendent says he doesn't want to do that, then does his employees just do without?
That would be a question for Mr. Long, I guess. Pete? He might be around, I'm not sure.
Did he have? Uh, he's not out in the hall right now.
Did he have any input into this, or was he?
Well, he was at Budget Committee when the, the motion was made and passed last, or two Thursdays ago. So I feel like he feels, I mean, I can't speak for him, but I feel like he thinks it includes his department, yes.
And the money would come from his fund balance?
That is correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Fritz.
Very briefly, I will ask the law director to chime in. But in past budgets and everything like that, the only way we can get the highway department money from the general fund is one of two ways. We can give him property tax money, or we can give him sales tax money. But we cannot just transfer money from the general fund over to the highway department. We got to give it either through the general fund, property tax, and/or sales tax dollars like we have done in the past. We cannot just transfer money, say, over there. We got to do it one of two ways. Sales tax, which we have done in the past, and/or property tax. And that's, in the past, raises and everything of that nature, that's how we have done it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Jay.
Yes.
Commissioner Fritz is exactly right, but the way I understood Robbie explain this is those highway department raises would be coming from the highway reserve. And there's no, now Robbie, please correct me, there wasn't, would not be a necessity to transfer money from the general fund to the highway department. It would be, those monies needed to take care of the raises in the highway department would come from the highway reserve. Now, Robbie, am I correct in my interpretation of that?
That is exactly what I was saying, yes. You are correct.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Fritz was right, but that's exactly what I thought. I appreciate you.
Real, real quick, Robbie, I've just got a question. When we appropriated a few months ago about $500,000 for three trucks for the, dump trucks for the highway department, did we take that from the general fund, or was that a property tax, or how, how did that?
That was, that was money that was moved from the unassigned fund balance to capital improvement fund, 171. So, yes, but we did that also for EMS every year, too, so.
But it went, okay, so it was as a capital outlet, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Isbell.
Commissioner Jamison may want to speak.
Oh, sorry.
I'll yield to him, then come back, please.
Okay, Commissioner Jamison.
Is this on?
Yes.
Can you hear it? Over the last 15 years, the average raise has been about 1.6%. Some years, there was no raise. Some years, there was 3%. Some years, there was a bonus. But if you average that over 15 years, it's about 1.6%. Well, the cost of living usually runs around 2.5% or 3% per year. If you don't get a raise for a year, you've lost 3%. I think that this is a reasonable amount to pay our employees. Also, we train a lot of employees, and then they go to other counties or other ambulance services and make more money after we spent a lot of time, effort, and money training them. So, you know, this is not an exorbitant amount of money. I think we, we should pay the money to these people because we're only as good as our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell.
Okay, like I read earlier, last year, 1920, the highway was $433,382 over. And they're anticipated now for this year's $400,000. So you're looking at about $800,000 to the highway that, because of this additional sales tax revenue that's going into the highway department.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell, and back to the maker of the motion, Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, so another thing I wanted to add is that I don't consider that 3% is really enough, but it's a step in the right direction because we've, we've held our wages for our county employees back too long, just like Commissioner Jamison was just saying. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to go to the board.
Go to the board. Got, we've got your motion on the order to approve the raise.
Yeah, well, that, my motion is to, it's, it's not really a motion, and I'm making, I'm, I'm asking that we go to the board to vote on the motion.
Let me, let me catch Commissioner Wondell and then Commissioner Val real quick, and then we can come back to you, Commissioner Mead, if you want to close out the discussion. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, you know, I'm not against the raise. I just got a couple of questions, though, and as far as it relates to the 1.6, I think Commissioner Jamison pointed out, we also have to take in consideration the amount of days we give off to folks. That adds up to quite a bit. I think we're at 13 days, if I'm not mistaken, in the county. Typical for a business is about six to eight days, not 13. And we did that, as Commissioner McCamey's pointed out several times over the years, because we didn't do raises. Am I saying that the, that, that should offset this motion? No, I'm not. I'm just pointing that out. Now, my question for Robbie is, this motion here under Section A, did it go through the Finance Committee?
No, it does not have to go to the Finance Committee. That's a Budget Committee. Finance Committee only sets policy. This is a committee. I don't know where you go.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. It doesn't have to, but I think it'd have been nice if it did. Because, you know, I, I'm looking at the motion. We're voting on a 3% cost of living increase, full-time employees, excluding school employees, retroactive July 1, but I don't know anything else. And I know Commissioner Isbell's mentioned the numbers, but I don't have the information in front of me to know how much total it is for the 3%, how much we're going to have to go back for the retroactive monies, how much monies do we totally, are we going to be asking for this motion? And then what fund is it going to come out of for the 3% and then the retro, retroactive?
Well, the, the retroactive, it's all included in the totals. And in Section A, you should have a total with different scenarios. It's scenarios for compensation increases. I gave every, it was in your packet. So you should be able to look towards the end of the Budget Committee packet, and you should see that. Say, where, where it talks about, if you do a bonus or an increase, a one, two, or three. A 3% increase would cost the county total, each, for every fund, $559,914. That includes the benefits. That's retirement, social security, Medicare, and short-term liability that we have to pay for every, on the dollar for, for a raise. General fund is $411,513. Library area is $9,571. Solid waste $4,555. EMS is $100,178. Tourism $3,225. Highway $29,367. And channel 95 is $1,505.
Thank you, Robbie. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to start off by saying, I agree with Commissioner Waddell on his statement that if I could forego a raise and vote yes on this motion tonight, I would. We have been advised that we cannot do that, that we will have to abstain for cause. So that's what I'll be doing tonight if this goes to a vote. However, I do believe, and Jay can correct me if I'm wrong, that since these new questions, the new information has come up tonight, I believe it would be beneficial for us maybe to send this back to the Budget Committee with this new information that Commissioner Isbell's presented. Some more numbers, maybe. Robbie, if, if you've been taking notes on this, maybe you can have some more information for us that we could discuss this again in the next Budget Committee. So if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend, to send back to the Budget Committee.
A motion to amend, send back to the, to refer. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner McCamey.
That wouldn't be an amendment. It would be a motion, a separate motion to refer it back to the Budget Committee.
Yes, sir. Former parliamentarian, correct me on that, Commissioner McCamey. Thank you.
Do we just need to go ahead and vote on Commissioner Mead's motion, then?
No. If, if his intent is to send it back to the Budget Committee, he indicated he wanted to amend this motion, but the proper motion would be to refer it back. And then that takes precedence over the existing motion.
Motion to refer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Got a motion to, to refer, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Scott.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. That's actually what I wanted to do. I have to agree with Commissioner Wondell in saying that, you know, there's too many variables out there right now. We did just get done with budget, and some departments and department heads received raises. In fact, some of them pretty chunky raises, and for them to get another raise before the employees are even brought up, I don't think it's right. So I'm going to agree to send it back to the Budget Committee. I'm going to allow them to get the numbers panned out. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Waddell.
Thank you for letting me speak again. Just for everybody on the commission, the, the budget, we've been having these budget meetings every month, same time. We've been talking about this for three months. If y'all would like to be a part of that, you're welcome to show up and, and be a part of that. But we've been discussing it ever since, back before July now, and it's taken this long to get it here. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to refer? Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, I just want to point out that this has been discussed for, for at least three months in budget. So sending it back to budget, to me, simply makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. Let's go to the board and vote on the motion to refer. Nine yes, seven no. Motion passes. Okay, Robbie, do you have anything else?
No, I don't. Before I leave, I would like to say one thing too. Our first order of business in the Budget Committee was to elect a new chairman. And after two years Commissioner White serving, Shane Bowles now the Budget Committee Chairman. But I just want to thank Commissioner White for being patient with me and all of his... He's been... I think he's done a really good job the last two years on the Budget Committee. And it's not been an easy job, especially two years ago. So thank you, Commissioner White.
Thank you. Any other questions for Robbie before he signs off? Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that this vote we just took to refer for those employees that might be listening does not mean we're voting no on an increase in pay. It means we're sending it back so we can get the proper amount of raise. Who knows what it can be? But I thank Commissioner Isbell. Lots of good discussion and I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. So want to get that point across. Does not mean it's not going to happen. Just means we're going to make sure we do it in the best way we can for the employees. And I wanted to thank you, Robbie, for pointing out. I did find that information down in the package. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner McCamey.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Robbie, if he would, to talk with the school superintendent and see if there's any possibility that monies could be derived from their budget for a raise for schoolteachers. And to also check with the highway superintendent and see if it's his intent to give his employees a raise should the other county general fund employees get it.
I'll do it.
Have that information at the Budget Committee next month.
Yes, I will.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey.
Good remark, Commissioner McCamey.
That's all I have for my... On my committee. Thank you all.
Thank you, Robbie. Have a good evening.
You too.
Next, Director of Schools, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you, Commissioner... Chairman Anderson. Just a few things. Hope you had a chance to read our report. Just a couple of things. We had a group of about 400 students to come back today from virtual. We're down to about 850 students that are only on virtual. Our numbers are still low. We're down about 130 students from last year. And most of those are elementary schools, especially our kindergarten. A lot of the parents decided to keep their kids home an extra year because they can start at five or six. So we're down about a little over 60 kids in that. We do appreciate you all approving the budget amendment tonight for Rocky Top. We're going... We partnered with Rocky Top and we're going to be putting new lights on their football... Helping them put new lights on the football stadium. They're a great partner for the school system and they do a great job up there. So we're glad we could help with that. We do another thing in that our... All of our employees, our teachers, our certified staff will be getting new laptops. Our high school and middle school already have them. Some of the elementary school have them. And that is... That's a need that we needed to do for a while. And we... That was really aspirated when we started doing online. Our Chromebooks are great to... For the students to do their work. But when you're trying to push out content, they need a little stronger device, so we're excited about that. Other thing is during the fall break, we started... Continued to do our upgrade on our infrastructure, on our internet in our schools. We... Our high schools are complete now and they will be starting on the middle schools, about a $1.2 million project. But that was... A million dollars that was paid by a grant. So we're excited about that. The 2021-22 calendar is set. The board approved it last month. It's pretty much the same as this year. We're starting the 1st of August with fall break, Thanksgiving break and Christmas break almost at the same time. So you can look at that. And I'll finish up with... This month, we're kind of celebrating our custodians and our maintenance staff. And if you've been in our schools, they do a fantastic job. They go above and beyond every month. And during this time of the year, when most people, especially me, had a few days off, they were still working in our schools. The maintenance was doing a lot on our gym floors and things like that. And we want to publicly acknowledge them tonight for the great work they do. They are really and truly the backbone behind our school system. And I will take any questions.
Commissioner Jaeger.
I was driving to Oliver Springs International Airport over the weekend and glanced over and saw the gym at the elementary school. What's the kind of progress we have on that?
That is... Just to be honest with you, I've not talked to our director of maintenance today, but it was a finished date about the 15th of October. So unless something came up, it should be finished. Yes.
Commissioner Wondell.
Sorry, it takes my mouse a little while to get to that button. Dr. Parrott, thank you for being here tonight and giving your report. I wanted to ask if you could, and we can do this later. You don't have to talk about it tonight. But I'm interested in learning what the process, policy, procedures are in Anderson County's school system as it relates to students being able to go to different schools. I'd like to revisit that. And I'd like to have your help and the school board's help in structuring some kind of policy that would... If a parent wants to move their child, whether it be academics or athletics, there'd be some kind of fee associated with that, where we can keep our children in the proper school districts. And I think it would eliminate a lot of issues that we have going into the future, too. It just seems to kind of cause issues when we keep going back and forth. And if you don't mind, and if you can put me in touch with the right person at schools, one of the board members, I'd like to get that policy the way it's read now and be able to study it and then maybe come back to it and talk about it more.
I will send you... The school board does have a policy on transfers, either in-zone or out-of-zone. And I'll send you that policy. I'll email that policy to you tomorrow for you to look at.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. You have a good evening.
Thank you.
Commissioner Isbell.
Tim, I've sent a copy of this to Greg Dill. That said, "American Creed." I don't know if you got the opportunity to see it.
Yes, yes. I saw that.
And I thought, you know, if it was supported here, this really for all of the school systems, you know, Clinton and Oak Ridge. And then the other thing was about the sidewalks there and the Rocky Top there for the middle school.
Yes.
And I know that's a city thing, but we're just looking to try to help get the ball rolling and, you know, help the city any way that we can, just for the students.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, and with that, we'd be more than happy if the board, if the Board of Commissioners votes on that. We'll be... We'll make sure that that gets out to all of our seniors, that it gets in their packet. I think it's a great idea.
Commissioner McCamey.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo what Dr. Parrott said about the custodians. You know, they don't have the option of working from home. They're there every day. And believe it or not, I worked at the schools as a custodian at one time. And we've also got some other, what we call classified employees that do a great job. And that's our cafeteria staff and the teachers aides. But they all do a great job. And I think they are... A lot of times they're underappreciated. And not taking anything away from teachers, but, you know, this is... They just complement what the teachers do. And I just wanted to echo what he said about custodians and our classified staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McCamey. And I do too. Yes, our classified staff is second to none. They do an amazing job. One thing I forgot to say too is the federal government last week announced that they will extend the free food, free lunch program. It was supposed to end in December. They will... They've extended that through the end of the year. So every student in Anderson County at every school will eat free lunch and free breakfast for the rest of the school year, which is the way I think it should be all the time.
Commissioner Creasy.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you and your staff for keeping the commissioners notified on your distribution of your news and information on the virus, on all the activities related to that. And certainly appreciate it in keep being up front with us and keeping us advised. Good move on your part and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Dr. Parrott, what's the... You said we were down 130 students. What's the total enrollment?
We have 5,965 students.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Parrott? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You have a great night. I will also ask the board about the raise, the money that y'all said that about. I'll bring a report back for the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Next up, the county mayor. Mayor Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good evening, commissioners. The first item on my agenda is the appointment of Tyler Mays with the Anderson County Sheriff's Department to the 911 Board with term expiring January 2023.
Motion by Commissioner Mead.
Yes.
Approved, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Next action item I have is authorization to submit a letter of intent for a built environment grant at Norwood Elementary and Middle School campus. If you recall, you authorized and supported a master plan for that campus. Campus is shared with the community. And I don't know if we'll be able to get to apply, but I would like to go ahead and get the authorization to submit a letter in case we're able to pull something together.
Got a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Isbell.
Yes.
Any discussion? Go to the board. Commissioner White votes yes, so motion passes unanimously.
All right, and then next on the agenda, Commissioner Wondell asked for me to report on Claxton Sewer status as well as the T-DOT construction at Clinton Highway. On the Claxton Sewer status at Fauscarnie Road, I did speak with Mr. Clowers at the Water Authority. And previously, the board had, I guess this was four years ago, set the priority on finishing water lines to areas of the county that did not have water lines. So as I think we announced a couple of months ago, Anderson County did win that award and that covered Savage Garden, Faus Lane, Collins Gap, Heinz Creek, Judson Road, Buchanan Lane. And in speaking with Mr. Clowers, he said that pretty much finishes up. There may be some spots here or there, but that pretty much finishes up water. One of the challenges, and I think I mentioned this at Operations Committee, one of the challenges for the Fauscarnie area was the CDBG grants are based predominantly on income, but we can also handle it through a septic failure process. And in speaking with Mr. Clowers, we would anticipate as a lot of those septic tanks continue to age in that area, we probably have a lot more failures and are able to achieve the goal there. And so he's going to raise this with the Water Authority and put that on a priority list for the next round of funding for the CDBG. Then on the T-DOT Claxton project, so in communicating with Rachel Bentley, Rachel is the district supervisor and also the project manager, she said what happened is many times the case when they're modifying, they had several unexpected issues arise at the particular intersection. She said each phase of the work was complicated with multiple utility conflicts and relocations that delayed the project. Then she said, I guess the major issue was there was an unidentified manhole that they did not know about that ended up conflicting with the proposed work. So she shared with me, in order to share with you all, that the construction office has been working diligently with the T-DOT Utility Office as well as the local utility partners to review the systems and collect statements in order to properly identify the party in ownership of this structure and to ensure that facilities will not be adversely affected by the removal of this structure. She said, in fact, just today, that they continued the discussion and plan on moving forward with a plan for the main... That manhole, that unidentified manhole later this week. Once that issue is completely resolved, the contractor is committed to completing the stone and the grading work that is necessary for paving the new right turn lane and placing final surface throughout the project. And specifically, I know we were focused on when would the school... When would the parents be able to use that lane for Claxton Elementary? And so that's what she's talking about there because I had asked her about that right lane. This will allow all lanes to be opened in the proposed configuration or their new configuration. And work for the signals at the intersection is still ongoing. The department is working diligently to mitigate delays caused by the discovery of the unidentified manhole. She said she cannot give us a specific date at this particular time, but she is anticipating completion of the project prior to the holidays. So she encouraged me to reach out. So anytime you have more questions, just let me know. We finally connected with who the go-to person is for this project, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, thank you for those updates. That's terrific and appreciate the updates on Claxton Sewer and Fauscarnie. And I know Commissioner Fritz knows many residents down around our neck of the woods here, off Fauscarnie and some of the other roads that go back in there. He knows them all by name. I'm still learning, I guess. But thank you for those updates and appreciate Anderson County Water Authority on that. Certainly appreciate what you just gave, the most recent update on the intersection at Claxton School. A lot of people have been asking. So it sounds like the roads could be possibly paved, finished off by the holidays. I think that's great. And I understand the difficulty of this manhole that no one knew existed and that's what caused the issue. So thank you for that update. And while I got you, I just wanted to ask you one question. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just didn't get a chance and didn't think about it. But have you had any thoughts on this proposed raise for the employees? Were you a part of the Budget Committee on that? And if you don't... I'm not trying to catch you off guard. I just...
No, no.
I'm curious what your thoughts are.
I did share my thoughts with the Budget Committee and did speak to it at that time. And I definitely believe our employees are deserving. And one of the issues I did raise, though, was that the schools did take their raises out in order for us to balance the budget and for them to present us a balanced budget. And also, I did raise just some procedural concerns about how we do, you know, move forward with the raises. And I'm still a believer in one of the things we talk about is the turnover we have, but we do not have turnover in all areas. We have particular fields where there are turnovers. And so that was just my caution and some... my caution and some level of my concern was, you know, we need to focus, for instance, you know, I have consistently over the years raised at Budget Committee, our detention facility being an area of high turnover and the need to bring those salaries up. And the same for EMS. I mean, we have folks that are starting, you know, $10 an hour, nine, it's actually nine something that they start. And that's another area where we have a lot of turnover. And so I was encouraging focusing on that area and then perhaps a more staggered process where we look at this year, but I guess I'm, you know, and I don't mean this as a political statement. I mean, this is a COVID statement. We're seeing a lot of sales tax increase, and that is a wonderful and great thing. But I do, I do wonder, you know, what does this trend line continue to look like? Right now, folks are home, they're all ordering online. Is some of this associated with the UPF project? Have we done a full analysis where we've got some revenue shortfalls? So for instance, with COVID, we know we've upped our pre-trial release program and our jail, you know, we were housing inmates for other folks. So we'll probably have a pretty substantial shortfall there. You know, I guess my concerns were more along that lines. Yes, but, you know, let's leave ourselves some room for the budget season when we have the full trend line. And then also, I still continue to believe that, and, you know, I'm going to preface it with, I could be just flat dead wrong, and I'm willing to accept that. But I do believe there are a lot of employees that I would, I would prefer a, everyone gets, you know, a particular amount, whether that's 750 or 1,000, to bring some of those folks at the lower level up. Because I think that's where a lot of the issues are and where we see a lot of the turnover. I mean, we recognize employees that have been here 30 years and 40 years so that, you know, the turnover is not across the board in Anderson County government. So those were just only some cautions, but I think the Budget Committee does a fantastic job. And I wasn't, you know, raising cane or anything like that. I was just expressing some, you know, here's some other things to think about.
Thank you for sharing that, Mayor, and I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioner McCamey.
Yeah, going back to the T-DOT construction there at Clinton Highway, several years ago, we talked about as a county commission, lighting that intersection. And I feel this is a good time to look at that again, even if it means us getting just the normal lights like we get at our homes through Clinton Utilities Board. It costs about 750 or $8 a month. But with this construction, it appears there's going to be poles on either side of Raccoon Valley and poles on either side of Edgemore. And this would be a good time, I think, to, you know, start that back again, is having that lighted intersection. It's a very big intersection now, and it's very dark when you go through there at night.
Would you all like me to do that? Should we get a motion to, or are you just wanting me to do some?
I was thinking, I was thinking that maybe the person you were talking with that you updated us with and got the information for could talk with them about it and see if it's something that the state can do while they're, you know, doing this construction. Or if not, you know, what we would have to do in order to light that intersection, because it's very dangerous. It's one of the largest intersections really in the county right now. And I'm not talking about interstate lighting like we've got at the High 75 exit there at Clinton, but just some type of lighting, you know, because like I said, you go through there at night, and when the commissioners that represent that district, I know you go through there day and night, and you know what it's like. I ran a small business there where JB's Corner Market is at. And, you know, when I closed in the wintertime at 6:00, it was mighty dark at that intersection.
I will look into that and see if there's a possibility to amend that with some of their safety dollars. I would anticipate, the only expectation they would have, if they were able to help us with the work itself, would be we would have to take responsibility for the lights, I would imagine, much like the stoplights. So if you'll recall, we have to enter into an agreement with them. They put up the new lights and they'll get all that installed, but then we will have to pay the maintenance and upkeep on it, in other words. So, but I'll look into that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me get Commissioner Fritz's question or comments real quick, and then we'll come to Commissioner Wondell's motion. Commissioner Fritz?
I was just going to pass on to the mayor. I personally have probably knocked on and talked to everybody in the Fauscarnie area and concerning the sewer and everything. Ver fact, in the last CBG grant that we had out there, we went for a low-income grant at that time. And we almost had it in, when the people came through and started knocking on the doors to talk to them about it, about the septic failures. They didn't know who the people were. And then when they asked, they said, "Do you have sewer problems?" He's like, "I don't know who you are." And, "No, we don't have no problems." And then they failed them, and they went elsewhere. So, I mean, we've got to educate the folks, you know, make sure, you know, don't be embarrassed if you've got problems, to tell them. But not only can we meet it out in this area here with the low income, we can also meet it as septic failures. I mean, I personally just paid close to $9,000 having to put the new drain field in. So we have major problems in this area here. And folks are hurting, and you drive down the road, and I know Commissioner Wondell can say it too, that if you got your window down, you can smell raw sewage anywhere, especially during the summer when it's real hot and stuff. So we've got to eventually do something and because the people are hurting.
Okay, okay. And if you hear, and let me just say this, you know, we can assist with the survey process. I know the Water Authority's done that. I know we helped do that down in Clinton. But if you are contacted by anyone, please have them share their information with me, and I'll compile all that. And that'll make our work a lot easier when we try to find these failures. So if we know in advance, that'll assist greatly.
Okay, Commissioner Wondell, did you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to follow up on Commissioner McCamey's recommendation, just to put it on a motion that the mayor get with, I believe it was, the T-DOT on the light, and if she can get enough to report back to the commissioner.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wondell, and seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board and vote. Commissioner White votes yes. Motion passes 15-1. Any other questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor Frank.
Thank you, Chairman.
And we want to take about a 10-minute recess. Everybody want to take a break? Real quick, we'll come back here at 8:10. Everybody back online?
Yep, yes.
Okay, Law Director report. Jay, you there?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Always appreciate the opportunity to be with you, members of the county commission. Just a couple of issues here. I draw your attention to my written report and the agenda materials. Does anybody have any questions on the contract approvals? If not, Section B is a very good overview of where we stand on property maintenance cases. This was developed by Brad Pruitt, my office. He's done a fantastic job of getting this together and getting it up to date. As always, we do appreciate the assistance of Danny Phillips and Marjorie Presley and the Code Enforcement Unit. They do a fantastic job, and we deeply appreciate everything they do for this county and certainly the assistance they give us. Any questions on the property maintenance overview of where we stand on these cases? We don't normally give you this much detail, but that's all the cases we currently have pending and where they stand in court. and where they stand in court. Section C is a new lawsuit we had filed against us. It's another inmate medical claim, very consistent. The wording is almost identical to some of the other claims that we've had recently from inmates. This one is a little bit different in that they incorporated Ridgeview Mental Health as a co-defendant instead of Southern Health Partners, our contractor at the jail. But anyway, we feel very comfortable about this lawsuit. None of our people did anything wrong in this matter, and the detention facility staff continued to perform at a very high level, especially during this COVID crisis. And we all deeply appreciate everybody that works at the detention facility and all they do each day, coming to work 24 hours a day. It seems like they're always there 365 days a year and doing an excellent job. Section D is a lawsuit update. The Toyota case, the Supreme Court denied our trap 11 or permission to appeal. However, that case is still alive and well. We're going, tax years '08 through '12 have been the agreed order that we've always claimed was fraudulently induced or prepared. That only applied to 2008, 2012. Other tax appeals brought forward by Toyota are still pending and will continue to fight that. I spoke to Property Assessor Alley as recently as today. We're moving forward. We've asked the court to expedite, give us a hearing date immediately on these cases moving forward. We feel like we have a much stronger case on these cases moving up from 2013 through 2020, but we'll continue to fight those vigorously. The refund on the Toyota case has already been handled by Robbie. That worked out to be about $273,000. Those had, those funds had already been paid into the county. This is nothing more than a refund. Thanks for Ms. Copeland and all her help and Mr. Alley trying to figure out this refund to the statutory formula and certainly everything Robbie does to help us on that. The next item, Item E, is our online tax sale. You have that contract before you. I mentioned it to you last month and took it through operations. I've had no feedback so far on that. I will tell you, though, we're probably going to need to postpone our tax sale. We were looking at the first week of December, and I think I communicated that to the majority of you. We've had some problems getting the publisher's affidavit from the Oak Ridge newspaper back on time, so we may have to delay that. But I'd still like to move forward with the online tax sale. This contract before you will only apply to this one sale. We'll see how it works, but I've spoken with the chancellor and the clerk master, and honestly, we have no choice at this point to go forward with an online tax sale to meet all the rigid COVID standards set by the Supreme Court and the governor. We're going to be forced to do online tax sale, but I think this is a good opportunity. If there's anything good that's come out of the COVID crisis for us to experiment with online tax sale, see how it works, if we do get more bidders and a more aggressive bidders on these. But anyway, I need your approval on Item E tonight, if you don't mind, and that's where we're at on that issue.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve Item E.
Move for approval.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead.
Yes.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Commissioner Jameson votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners. The last item I have here is the item that was added to the agenda. I'd like permission for myself to work with the mayor and go forward with Blockhouse Valley Hunt, be under the exact same protocols we've utilized before. The dates will just be changed. The dates are yet to be determined. There'll be this hunting season coming up. We'll make public notice and advertise to anybody, any citizen in the community that would like to put the name in the hat for the drawing. But we'd like to move forward with the deer hunt at Blockhouse Valley under the same exact procedures we've enacted before. Nothing different on this case. But if anybody has any questions on that, I'll be glad to take those right now. Otherwise, I need approval to move forward with the Blockhouse Valley deer hunt.
Motion by Commissioner Waddell to move forward, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll work with the mayor, and we'll get that started immediately. Last thing I have is, Mayor, please thank Leanne for all the great help on the resolutions this month. That was wonderful. Whoever wrote the Claude Martin resolution, we've honored Claude before, but he certainly do anything we can do for this gentleman. He's a wonderful citizen, and I've always enjoyed speaking with him and hearing his fantastic stories about his time in the service. But a wonderful citizen, he's certainly deserving of everything we can possibly do. But thanks to Leanne for helping us put all that together. And again, thanks to many of you, certainly Commissioner Waddell, Commissioner Jameson, Commissioner Mead, for all your kind words about our number one asset. That's our employees. And I know you guys will try to take care of them as soon as we possibly can. They are our number one asset, and they've been our frontline workers through this entire process. But thank you for all the wonderful comments about our employees. That's all I have for you tonight, unless somebody has questions on anything that has to do with our office or any legal issue that we're facing. I'll be glad to answer any of those questions.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time, sir.
Next, Operations Committee report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Anderson made a motion to adapt to Granger County Resolution requesting state officials to add meat processing training to TCAT curriculum and send to the State Commissioner Mead. Seconding the motion, motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Mead made a motion officially become a partner, sponsor to the Naval Sea Cadets, and provide a space for them. Commissioner Waddell seconded the motion. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Mead for...
Salute.
Seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Scott made a motion for the robotist competition to go to the state level and put in some of the commissioner's funds to backs project. Commissioner Anderson seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Forward full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Scott.
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Mead made a motion, had the law director go through with a background check procedure. Commissioner Scott seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Forward full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Approval? Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Meredith made a motion to approve the seventh Judicial District Drug and Crime Task Force. Commissioner Scott seconded the motion. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Approval? Any discussion on the motion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Waddell made a motion that supports American Creed document. Consideration to give to graduating seniors of Anderson County High Schools and for the Anderson County School Board for consideration. Commissioner Yeager seconded the motion. Motion passed forward for commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Waddell, seconded by Commissioner Mead for approval. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item was not forward to full commission for approval, but we did discuss the homeless programs and shelters in Anderson County. Commissioner, Vice Chairman, Val, myself, also attended Rocky Top City Council meeting, and what came out of the Operations Committee is that we'd form a task force, and that's where we're at on that. That concludes the Operations Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. And I got a response from the Tennessee Valley Coalition for the Homeless. They've switched their CEO, so they're kind of in transition, and they are planning on attending some of the meetings in the future just to kind of get acquainted with the county government, and they do plan on coming to talk about their...
Sorry, Chairman, for your assistance in that. Thank you.
Next, Intergovernmental Committee report by Committee Chair Denenberg.
Chairman.
Thank you, Mr.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, before you went to there, I was going to say that I spoke with Sheila Michaels with, about the homeless problem there. She said that they have a dedicated person to that Rocky Top issue. She's head of the torch organization. They're working with Main Street Baptist Church there. So there is some ongoing work in that direction, and I'm sure that Mr. Isabelle and Mr. Val are very aware of that work and have been working with her and that organization. I think the task force that he's suggesting may be in order, that everyone can work together that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy, and Commissioner Denenberg. I wonder if you're ready to go ahead with your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Waddell made a motion to approve the July minutes. Commissioner Isbell seconded the motion. Motion passed. Commissioner Isabelle made a motion to nominate Commissioner Denenberg as chairperson. Commissioner Val seconded the motion. Motion passed by acclamation. Discussion on TVA's transportation of dirt for covering in place of coal ash was taken up. We had an extensive discussion, but no action was taken at that time. We also had a very good discussion on the excessive truck traffic and the wear on our roads, in particular, Old Emery Road, as we understand that the transportation from the construction site was to be down Edgemore to Old Emery. But I'm wondering now with the recall on information by TVA as to what may be going on and maybe a transition to a different site. But we had plenty of discussion, but no action was taken on that as well. We also discussed the letter received by Mayor Frank from TDEC dated August 5th of this year. We discussed with the mayor about the fact that a reply has not been given, but we discussed the fact that we would like to have some input to a reply to TDEC. And the mayor was very gracious to allow us to participate. Under new business, nothing was discussed and/or old business, and we then adjourned. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the end of the report from the Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Old business. Do we have any, anything under new business?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Fritz.
We put under new business of Mr. Creasy. They talk about COVID.
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Creasy, did you want to talk about?
Well, yes, I'd like to bring it up that we didn't, we've said once before that we'd be discussing this as long as we had an issue with the virus in our community. And I'm very proud that the governor has extended the remote meetings, and we look forward to getting back to normal when this is all over, and we're certainly hoping things will be better for all of us. But I just wanted to see what other information we could get from our county government about how we doing with our employees, how our interactions are going, how it's affecting our employees. Has there been any issues, medical issues or absentee issues or any other problems, discipline problems? I guess the mayor and chairman might know about anything or the law directors, any issues that we need to discuss as a county commission or any reports we should be getting from any of our elected officials. It's been kind of quiet. We haven't heard any report from the analyst director. He was giving us regular reports there for a while, but we haven't had anything recently. So at least I haven't. So I'm not sure exactly what's been going on within county government that I've missed out on or have I missed out on anything. And I just wanted to bring that up and see where we stood there, if any other commissioners had any thoughts or questions that they would like to put forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay. I can address a couple of those issues.
Okay.
I think Kim is online. She may be able to help me with this, but our last update was 15 county employees have been infected. They're all under the protocol established by County Commission and the Health Department guidelines along with the CDC. We've had no serious sicknesses. I can't report on the school system. I think they've contacted you individually about that, but our last update on the county side was 15 employees. But do remember, these offices, the vast majority of them have been open the entire time. But that's where we stand on that. And to my knowledge, there has been no discipline issues, nothing that's crossed my path. But that's what I know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Law Director.
Commissioner Scott. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a quick reminder to everyone that if you haven't gotten your flu shot, please do. Shingle shots are also available as well. If you haven't had shingles before, you don't want them. It's very, very painful, very painful, and something that you just have no control over. But I know that the pharmacies are offering free flu shots. You've got insurance. Just go get, go get it, as well as just flat out staying safe. Be sensible and responsible. Thank you.
Commissioner Creasy, I was just going to say that, to my knowledge, just to reiterate what Mr. Y... to reiterate what Mr. Yeager just said, um, we have, I don't know of any issues. The departments have all worked very well together. I have seen that. Um, of course, I mean, a lot of people come and go in the building, um, and we have had some occasions where even though folks are asked, um, have you had any exposure to COVID? There have been a, a couple or a few of occasions where folks have, uh, not told the truth and then they get to the third floor, for instance, and it's a, a different situation. And then Roger and his team have, uh, responded immediately with sanitizing and, and, um, you know, all of those protocols and his team has worked extra hard and, and been very diligent and responsive to the various departments. Um, just a little FYI, I try to, TEMA has a call twice a week. I try to go on all of those calls on occasion. I just have to miss it for other conflicting meetings, but, um, some of the stuff that the governor is going to do, they're going to put out a new website that's going to have even more county by county data. Um, they did extend that virtual option. Um, they're going to do a new PSA campaign about all the safe practices and, and, um, all of the reminders about the healthy protocols. Um, I'm trying to think anything else, um, that they're going to do on a local level. Um, the new website, I think that, um, the hospitals, um, they did report today, uh, that the hospitals are now in better shape than they were in July and August and certainly, um, better than they were in March and April from a, uh, ability to handle COVID and, um, even in the face of rates that are trending up, the, um, hospital issues look good, which that, I mean, in the face of bad news, that is, that is a, you know, spot of good news. And, uh, one of the big things that's going to be coming out that we're going to look for more details on is the rapid tests and, uh, the state of Tennessee is anticipated to get two million rapid test on the first round that will be available from the federal government and that'll be deployed to multiple areas. And so that's another update, but I will reach out. Uh, Nathan was sending regular reports and, uh, I will reach out to him and, and see, uh, cause he's kind of boots on the ground out there, uh, dealing with the hospitals and the medical community. So we'll get some input and share that with commissioner, with the full body, Commissioner Creasy.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, we were, we were getting good reports there in the early beginnings. Tim is Commissioner Isabel and Denenberg were out there working hard getting masks and, uh, several of us commissioners were donating money to help purchase masks and, uh, we haven't had any updates of where we, where we stand on our PP equipment. Uh, uh, and I'm, I'm assuming we're okay on that since we haven't heard anything. Uh, do you know exactly where we stand on our equipment for our EMS and, and our county employees and we've got plenty of masks, hand sanitizer, face shields, anything like that?
Yes, sir.
That we need, we don't need, uh, how we stand on that.
Um, right now, everything is good and, um, uh, our EMS department is, um, keeping their stock levels very high. So they've got a, a count where if they get below that, they go ahead and trigger another order and, you know, we're just prepared to, to have it stockpiled if needed. And, um, then also they work with our other departments and then EMA also works, uh, to get whether there are shortfalls, that's emergency management. But, uh, Nathan and his team, for instance, um, you know, we make the surgical masks available for, uh, a lot of folks inside county government and, um, what Nathan is doing is he's ordering extra and then when Roger foresees that he's getting ready to run low, then, then one of us will reach out to Nathan and they're all working very well together and, and taking care of that. So there's really, there's no walls dividing any of the departments with this. Everyone's just working together and if Roger needs, you know, if he has extra hand sanitizer that he can give to solid waste and solid waste can't get their hands on it, you know, there's a lot of partnership going on and finance is doing a real good job too of helping keep all of that balanced and, and, you know, it all plugged into the various departments and so that everyone gets reimbursed. So it's working very well.
Yeah, all of, uh, our county employees are at risk dealing with the public and the citizens and I know our EMS personnel and our first responders are right out there where they're at risk of being exposed. Uh, I know the, um, I know of a person that, uh, was transported by EMS just recently, a few weeks ago from my neighborhood that, and I knew that they run a risk of being exposed because he had already tested positive and he was recovering at home and got worse and they transported him to the hospital. So those are the kind of things we need to make sure we're prepared for and you have reassured us quite a bit in your comments, but up until that, your comment, I wasn't really sure where we stood. Uh, assumed everything was okay because we hadn't heard any negative reports, but it's good to hear positive comments from you and EMS director and the law director and, and from our, uh, personnel, uh, department or HR department. So, you know, I encourage any information that you can keep coming to us, uh, from the different department heads that, uh, like the, uh, the Oak Ridge school system publishes it in the paper when they have a, a case and exposure. So anyhow, any news that coming our way is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just to add a little bit of information, especially to those who may be listening, um, when Commissioner Creasy commented about a neighbor who was being transported that had been tested positive and positive and became worse, um, I know for a fact because of my time spent over at EMS that, um, they do an excellent job every time there is a transport of completely sanitizing the inside of that ambulance before there's another person put in there. So no one should be concerned about having to be transported in one of Anderson County's ambulances, um, and/or by their personnel because they have been very well trained and have got the, the best, um, uh, equipment that, um, is possible to protect themselves and protect the patients that they may be, uh, transporting. So, um, just a little comment that I wanted to throw out there and hope that helps.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Any other questions? Commissioner Wondell.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you real quick and I don't want to get off the subject too much. I just, we have our fourth fully involved fire at Ben's mobile home, uh, facility park this evening and, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to all the volunteer fire departments, especially Claxton Volunteer Fire Department, uh, the sheriff's office and, and Nathan Sweet's team, uh, EMS for getting out there. We had injury, injury at one of the last ones, but, uh, it's becoming an issue out there at Ben's and I just also want to thank the other, um, volunteer fire departments that have showed up to help. So, uh, unfortunately it's the fourth one this month, so, uh, just wanted to share that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else? Before commission? Yes.
Chairman, this is, uh, Nathan Sweet. I was, uh, made aware that, uh, there might be some questions for our department, maybe a COVID update from our department.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Creasy had, was just kind of wanting a general update. If there's any, any information you can provide.
Sure. Well, of course, we'll continue to, to deal with it, um, response to calls, response to patients. Um, as far as PPE goes, we're doing well. Uh, honestly, the, the hardest thing for us to get a, a hold of right now is gloves. Uh, we're almost out of medium sized gloves. Um, I think we're down to about 13 boxes, which we'll go through in just a couple of days, uh, really. Um, we have other sizes that others will have to wear, uh, so we're, we continue to stay on top of it. Um, the prices is kind of sore. Uh, we were paying for a box of gloves, we were paying about seven bucks. Now it's about $28, uh, for, for the prices on these things continue to, to go up. We continue to manage that. Um, sometimes we pay that price and sometimes we don't. Uh, we, we continue to, uh, to monitor that. Um, we'll continue to deal with responses to this call, uh, to this pandemic, but, uh, so far we've, we've done well. We've done great and we've kept our head above water. Um, our, our staff is staying healthy. We haven't had even, um, a case or an exposure, uh, which have all come from outside of work in, in well over a month, uh, so we're, we're doing well on that end.
Great to hear.
Thank you, Nathan, for your update. That's very good and I want to compliment you and your staff and all the first responders, rescue squad, volunteer firemen, uh, for what they're doing and staying safe and, and keeping the rest of us safe. We really thank you for that. Have a good evening.
Okay, anything else? We have a motion to adjourn, Commissioner Yeager. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
See you next month. Thank you.